A full forum present. And I'd like to make sure that everybody has their phones on silent or vibrant so that we don't interrupt the meeting. That would be appreciated. I'd like to go ahead and stand for the invocation of Mr. Zulovic. Will do. That would be awesome.
Dear God, be near to those who mourn in the wake of this disaster. Let your comfort flow like healing rain over their hearts. In the silence of grief, speak peace. In the loneliness of loss, be their companion. Let every tear become a seed of restoration. Send people who will hold them, listen to them, and mourn with them. Father, help them to process their pain and release their burdens to you. Replace fear with faith and hopelessness with hope. Remind them that you are the God who rebuilds ruins and restores joy. In your mercy, lift them up again. Amen.
I'll do the pledge of allegiance to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas flag?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right. All right. So number four on your -- we don't have anything for the public forum. Nothing was turned in, so we'll move on to the presentation. Number four, press release presented by Mayor Benjamin regarding the Hartwood Native Garden in the city of Montgomery's Memory Park. I'll just go ahead and read the release. Local volunteers create Hartwood Native Garden in Montgomery's Memory Park, Montgomery, Texas, July 15, 2025. A new garden called the Hartwood Native Garden at Montgomery's Memory Park is underway thanks to a community effort among volunteers at the local Hartwood Chapter of the Texas Master Naturalist Program and the Rotary Club of Lake Conroe Foundation in partnership with the city of Montgomery. The Hartwood Native Garden at Montgomery Memory Park is located behind the Charles B Stewart West Branch Library and adjacent to Fernland Historical Park. The plan for enhancing the park with native plants was approved by the city. This includes drainage improvements, planting native plants, and installing signage. Native plants benefit native pollinators such as bees, butterflies, moths, bats, and birds. These native pollinators play a crucial role in sustaining ecosystems and providing essential services to the American culture, estimated as much as $9 billion annually. Interest in conservation of native pollinators has grown rapidly over the last few years as several species have experienced dramatic population decline. The Hartwood Native Garden will bring awareness to and create positive change for pollinator conservation. The Hartwood Chapter of Texas Master Naturalists is celebrating our founding 20 years ago. We have 155 members volunteering across Montgomery and Walker Counties, said Lisa Houston, president of the Hartwood Chapter. This group of local Texas Master Naturalist volunteers have served to initiate, plan, create, and maintain the Hartwood Native Garden as a community service. She credits longtime Montgomery residents Shelley McCoy for initiating the driving, the volunteer effort to create the Hartwood Native Garden as a community project to celebrate the chapter's 20th anniversary. Memory Park has been a community effort since its inception and initial beginnings in 2005, said Charlie Pareda, treasurer of the Rotary Club of Lake Conroe Foundation. Everyone is invited to participate and enjoy the park. The Texas Natural Naturalists, Texas Master Naturalist, volunteers from the local Hartwood Chapter are instrumental in the enhancement of Memory Park. About Texas Master Naturalists Program and the local Hartwood Chapter. The Texas Master Naturalists Program mission is to develop a corps of well-informed volunteers to provide education, outreach, and service dedicated to the beneficial management of natural resources and natural areas within our communities for the state of Texas. The statewide program website is txnm.tamu.edu. The local Hartwood Chapter is celebrating its 20th anniversary this year. The chapter provides citizen volunteers for implementing youth education programs for operating parks, nature centers, and natural areas, and providing leadership in local natural resource conservation efforts throughout Montgomery and Walker Counties. About the Rotary Club of Lake Conroe Foundation and the Memory Park. The Rotary Club of Lake Conroe Foundation, an IRS 501(c)(3) organization, was instrumental in the creation of the five-acre memory park beginning in 2005 and dedication in 2008. The Rotary Club Memory Park Committee is comprised of Rotarians and non-Rotarian volunteers who have helped maintain the park along with the city of Montgomery. They hold a volunteer workday every third Saturday of each month. The address for Memory Park is 202 Bessie Price Owen Drive, Montgomery, Texas 77356. Donations to maintain and enhance the park are tax deductible. Visit lakeconroerotary.org to learn more. Contact Julie Vickers, Hartwood Chapter Communications, phone number 713-294-7366, or email jvickers@consolidated.net. Photos and interviews available upon request. All right. Now we'll move on to the consent agenda. Item five on your agenda. Consideration of possible action on the City Council regular meeting minutes of May 27, 2025. Six. Consideration of possible action on the City Council budget workshop meeting minutes of June 9, 2025. And seven. Consider and accept excess collections for 2024 debt service and certification for debt service collection rate for 2025, 2026. Council, would you like to take these independently or cumulatively? What is your pleasure?
Cumulatively.
Cumulatively. I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda in full.
Motion by Ms. Fox to accept the consent agenda in full.
Second motion.
Second by Mr. Zulovic. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It's open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda as presented say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and we will accept the consent agenda as presented. Number, the next one, public hearing. The City Council will receive comments from the public on the below listed items. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. Persons wishing to participate or speak during the public hearing portion of the meeting must sign in to participate prior to the meeting being called to order. Item number eight. Convene into public hearing on the request of Texas First Bank for a special use permit for a financial institution with two drive-through lanes and a dedicated lane for drive-up ATM machine at 19940 Eva Street. It is 6:08, and we will convene into public hearing. No one is present to speak. We will go ahead and close this hearing at 6:08 p.m. Regular agenda. Number nine. Consideration of possible action regarding a request by Texas First Bank for a special use permit for a financial institution with two drive-through lanes and a dedicated lane for a drive-up ATM machine located at 19940 Eva Street. Ms. Tilly?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. And we are at 19940 Eva Street. That is located between the Wendy's and Christian Brothers. It's the last bakery block around that road right on 105 Eva Street. It is a B commercial zoning district. The reason why it's going through the special use permit application and process is that a financial institution is currently not listed in our listed permitted uses, but the closest permitted uses are offices, professional offices, and loan offices, all of which are permitted in the commercial district. In addition to that, they do have accessory uses, which is the drive-up teller and then the single drive-up ATM machine. So the accessory use plus the financial institution and a special use permit, I would recommend approval. The, what do you call it? Maneuvering of the lanes are all within the property itself. It doesn't have to overflow into, onto 105 or even the private drive behind this building. You'll see the photos, the layout of the building. It would meet all of our requirements under the compliance of law. It also went through the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they recommended approval. You'll see the memo attached for your reference, and I guess that staff will also recommend approval of this special use permit.
I make a motion we accept agenda item number nine as presented.
Motion by Mr. Donaldson.
Second.
Second by Ms. Fox that we accept item number nine as presented. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It's open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting item number nine as presented say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and we'll accept item number nine as presented. Item 10 on your agenda. Consideration of possible action on a resolution of the city of Montgomery, Texas approving an amendment to the City of Montgomery Policies and Procedures Manual, Section 5, Attendance, Leaves, and Absence. Reference number 5.04. Subject: Holidays as attached as Exhibit A. And further providing for effective date severability and finding and determining that the meeting at which this resolution is adopted was open to the public, that the public notice of time, place, and subject matter of the public's -- Those in favor of accepting item number 10 as presented say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and we'll accept item number 10 as presented. Item number 11 on your agenda. Consideration of possible action on a resolution of the city of Montgomery, Texas approving an amendment to the City of Montgomery Policies and Procedures Manual, Section 5, Attendance, Leaves, and Absence. Reference number 5.05. Subject: Vacation Leave as attached as Exhibit A. And further providing for effective date severability and finding and determining that the meeting at which this resolution is adopted was open to the public and that the public notice was on time, placed in the subject matter of the public business to be considered was posted as required by law.
I oppose resolution 25 dash 20.
Make a motion we accept. Agenda item number 11 as presented.
12? Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. You're right. I have it. I marked it off. Okay. There's been a motion by Mr. Zulovic to accept item number 11 as presented. Seconded by Ms. Fox. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It's open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting item number 11 as presented say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and we will accept item number 11 as presented. Item number 12. Consideration of possible action on the first reading of a resolution of the City Council of the city of Montgomery, Texas approving a project and expenditure of the Montgomery Economic Development Corporation for production of video promotional material with Pioneer Production Services LLC.
This is the item that was presented in the EDC?
It's for the short form video documentary?
Yes.
And the commercial segment for promotion?
Yes, and they already held their public hearing, and it now has to go through two readings through City Council and a 60-day waiting period for the first reading.
So is this the Dennis Quaid production? So I've spoken with them. They would like to come and do a promotional on the city of Montgomery to be broadcasted on all major broadcast platforms, streaming and otherwise in print and digital, and it can spend a day or two with us and really highlight Montgomery. And then it'll be like on Fox News and CNN and Business Week. It's a 10-second and a 1-minute, and I think there's a third one that they would cut and The city's never done anything like this as far as promotion and marketing.
I make a motion we accept the first reading of agenda item number 12.
Motion by Mr. Zulovic that we accept the reading of item number 12 as presented.
My second.
Seconded by Mr. Olson. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. It is open for discussion.
Tell me the amount.
$29,300. And that's for the videographers to come and for them to cut and stay. I think they're coming actually from Houston. I'm not sure if they're going to stay the night. But it's for all of them to be able to cut and splice and dice and then promote it.
How much was it again?
$29,300.
And so to be clear, it's being paid out of the EDC budget.
Yeah.
Because the expenditure is over $10,000. City Council approval is required.
Correct.
And section actually requires you to approve it twice. So if you approve it tonight, we'll back off the agenda next month as well.
They just can't say yes, yes, tonight?
There's some other things that come with this. We'll own this.
Yeah.
So we can use it.
At any time.
Right. So this is a good thing. And it's done. Dennis Quaid does the introduction. You know, it's professionally done, so it's not a little YouTube mock-up. It's an actual production.
Real production.
And he's also very good to Texas.
Yeah. He lives here. Yeah. He's good. So there's a motion and second by Mr. Olson. All those in favor of accepting item number 12 as presented say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and we'll accept item number 12 as presented. Thirteen on your agenda. Consideration of possible action on the first reading of a resolution of the City Council of the city of Montgomery, Texas approving a project and expenditure of the Montgomery Economic Development Corporation for the purchase of 0.2458 acres of land located in Montgomery Town Site 03, Block 16, in Montgomery County, Texas.
Fairer Council, this is an item that is also coming being presented by EDC for the purchase of a piece of land down on 149 and downtown, and it also has to go through two readings through City Council. It's already had the public hearing, and now we're just going through approval process and waiting for the 60-day waiting period.
Awesome. That's a great addition.
I make a motion.
Is everybody familiar where the piece of land is?
North of the Nethard.
North of the museum right around 149.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we accept item 13 as presented.
Motion by Ms. Fox that we accept item number 13 as presented.
Second.
Second by Mr. Donaldson. All those in favor of accepting item number 13 as presented say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries, and we'll accept item number 13 as presented. Item 14. Consideration of possible action on a resolution for support for the central Texas flood victims and a community solidarity initiative in the city of Montgomery, Texas.
The resolution is 25 dash 21. This is the green ribbon initiative?
Yes. And everything that happened out in Hunt and Ingram and Camp Mystic, other cities are adopting the green ribbons for around trees and important areas in town to show support and solidarity with the victims. And we have some that are actually in Montgomery County.
How are the ribbons going to be distributed?
I believe, is it Stephanie going to go around and put them up?
Have we already received them?
She has them, yes.
She already has them?
Well, it's just distributing three ribbons to citizens, city residents, right?
But I also think she's putting some up, probably in the front desk. But I know she's putting some up as well. As presented. Next on your agenda is item 15. Consideration of possible action on an ordinance of the city of Montgomery, Texas ordering a public hearing concerning amending Article 3, impact fees of Chapter 90, utilities of the city code of ordinances by adopting new impact fees for water and wastewater improvements that are attributed to new development in the city's proposed water and wastewater impact fee service area within the corporate boundaries of the city, providing open meeting and effective date provisions and providing for related matters. Mr. Wazowski?
Good evening. So as you all know, the city has adopted impact fees. Those have been in place for a few years at this time, and every so often, you're dividing a volume review of impact fees and government updates needed based on lane use assumptions, timing, development, et cetera. So as you all know, the city is very busy in terms of development. And so, you know, especially preliminary events such as annexations, because your lane use assumptions are based on the land that the city is wanting to serve. And so between that and the timing of the development of the projects needed, you're going to have to be rolling. So what this item today is, is calling the public hearing. One correction that will reflect in the actual verdicts is the public hearing will be on August 26 at 6:00 p.m. instead of September 25. So it's earlier than this based on some of the legislation coming down.
August 26?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Your second, Council meeting in Kansas. Kind of highlighting the changes that are in here in the process that's gone through thus far. So if you remember, you have a capital impact advisory committee, and that committee is the Planning and Zoning Commission serves that capacity. So back in May, these lane use assumptions and updated impact fees were presented to them to show what the changes were to the lane use as well as the impact fees themselves. So when you get to page 68 of your packets, you'll see the executive summary of the changes, and then everything behind that is supporting processes, exhibits, et cetera, kind of backing up the information. So what you have in here is we're looking at over the next 10 years, a projected additional 3,923 connections, with 1,754 of those currently in active development agreement feasibility, et cetera. So we have a lot that has happened now. That raises to the second point is the updated timing of the projects. So some projects that, this looks at a 10-year window, that we're sitting outside that 10-year window that we brought into the 10 years in order to keep up the demand and the growth. And obviously, the cost of completing projects continues to go up. So all those things combined between the additional connections, the timing of the projects, and the cost of the projects, it is approximately an increase of about 17% on impact fees. So it takes the maximum assessable impact fee for a single-family home from $3,984 to $4,788. That's per connection cost. And if you look on this, you'll see a whole of the recoverable amounts, just again, as a reminder, just talking about these every so often, but you're only allowed to capture the cost of increasing capacity. So, you know, for example, if we go and try to rehab the water plant, and we want to re-coating and replace the tank at a time, that doesn't increase its capacity. It's only based on what is actually producing more or increasing your capacity to provide water and service. So what the calculation goes through is those projects or parts of those projects are attributed to growth and the ability to provide service, not just taking care of your water system. Other projects that are on here, so you have water lines, you have plant projects, which we talked about sensibly in the past, as well as parts of projects that have been completed are being completed. So you can continue to assess part of impact fees to pay down debt. So things like downtown water line replacement that's been previously completed, the growth portion of the water plant number two project, so the increase of well capacity, that is part of the attributable fee, as well as projects that have been funded by developers and then reimbursed through impact fee credits. We still carry that cost forward, so you're still collecting on those costs that the city has spent this man.
When is number two going to happen?
So their contract time, and I don't have a true update, I cannot count, but their contract time ends, I believe, the second week of August. But I need to look, and as far as executive lines are scheduled on them, I don't have that updated right now.
Chris?
Yes, sir.
Where you state the, first of all, so everybody knows, we're talking about 10 years, $51 million. And 26-plus million for water, 24-plus for sewer. But you put in your executive summary that 21 million of the water is recoverable. How is it recoverable? Because the connection fees only cover 18 million.
That can go into the calculation. So what's allowed to go into the calculation is that recoverable amount. State law still limits on how much of that percentage you can recover. So most of those can reduce by roughly 50% based on the type of the calculation of what you can actually attribute toward the calculation of the impact fee. So state law is very specific on what you can and cannot count and how you can calculate it. And so this kind of takes it to that maximum assess instead of, hey, this water well project is, you know, this portion, if it's, so let's use water plant too, because that's kind of a question everyone likes. That water plant, that water well is a 300-gallon a day pump, a 300-gallon per minute pump to a 500-gallon per minute level. So we can't take the full cost of that well. We have to take that ratio of that 200-gallon per minute interest. And then there is a factor, most of those 50% of that cost that you can put toward the impact fees.
But you're saying it's recoverable as a matter of being able to use the impact fees, right?
It's recoverable in the fact of being able to go into the calculation for the impact fees.
Yeah, I understand that part. Okay. But the total, based on your calculation, the total of the impact fees for the 3,900 connections is only 18 million.
Correct.
But you're talking about twice that for recoverable.
Correct. You cannot capture, you're not allowed to go 100% on your cost by state law for the impact.
It's not dollar for dollar.
Yeah, I understand. So where's the other money come from when you say recoverable?
So, so again, I'm not quite following the recoverable kind of concept. Recoverable meaning it can go into the calculation. That's really the only part of recoverable, as far as where the delta comes from. So you're allowed to use impact fees to pay for debt. And so by issuing debt and using it, that piece to pay for those, as well as you have the increase of growth through development, this is just kind of one of the tools in the toolbox to be able to provide some funding to get that burden on the new developments that are paying for those as they come versus waiting for the cash flow.
Okay. So the recoverable is coming from users' fees, basically?
Correct.
Okay. I understand.
So this is just, tonight is called as a public hearing. Please take a look if you have more questions. We'll go over more detail. If you have questions, you can go.
One other quick question. When is the next time we can raise the impact fees?
So you, so you do it by annual review. So every time there's a preliminary, we'll look at it. And it's that. Annexations, et cetera. There is new legislation in place.
As of September 1, the state law changes, and it's going to be once every three years.
Oh.
And that's my recent work, aggression against that.
So the rates that we're changing to are based off of a growth number that?
Projected.
It's projected growth. So, and I struggle with our projected growth. So if we're saying in 10 years, we're going to have roughly 3,900, but?
Additional.
Additional, right? But in three, we already have 45% of that. So to me, that calculation is not good.
In terms of, you have a lot, so based on the impact fee set, it's what's in the current city limits. And so what is there? So with alley annexations, you know, you're building alley, and a lot of the properties that are in the city limits, which is what we can calculate this on, are included in the city. So the, those additional connections are the build-out of what is in development today and miscellaneous undeveloped properties around the city.
So that's 3,900 more from today on?
That's correct.
Okay. What are the estimates? I think you did some work. What are the estimates on what we can expect? Full growth for the city? How many connections do you anticipate?
I do not have it in front of me, but I can definitely bring it to the next meeting and when we got a hearing on this next month.
Okay. Because I'm, you know, I'm looking at the fact that the city is a finite space, and we only got so many acres, and we've got wetlands and creeks and stuff like that. And when we're looking at $51 million, we need to know where money's going to come from.
Chris, the surrounding areas, cities and areas like us that actually collect impact fees, this is how a lot of cities have gotten behind because they didn't. Is 17% increase because we're all in hypergrowth, is that typical, or do we need to go a little higher?
So your, I mean, it's kind of, the way it's calculated is based into the max that we can.
Okay.
And so that's why it's worded as maximum assessable.
Right.
You know, cities will like to assess lower at this pace. You know, if it allows 10%, we're taking 2% of that calculation. And as much as we're allowed to put inflationary numbers and tendencies and things like that and companies. But as far as the total number, yes, there are a lot of cities around me that have impact fees, but I know there are more cities that are looking at them to help with funding. You know, this is, is it one or not? So if you have questions, please, please let me know. But actually, tonight is called as a public hearing on August 26 at 6:00 p.m.
Do I want to call a public hearing?
I make a motion that we approve agenda item number 15 as presented.
And then we need to be August 26?
Yeah, with the meeting be August 26.
At 6:00 p.m.
6:00 p.m.
City Hall.
Yes. No, I won't say anything. All right. Motion by Mr. Zulovic that we accept item number 15 as presented, and that the public meeting will take place August 26 at 6:00 p.m. meeting will take place August 26th at 6:00 PM at 101 Old Plantersville Road, City Hall. Is there a second?
I second.
Mr. Olson seconded. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote, it's open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting item number 15 as presented, with the meeting to be held August 26th at 6:00 PM at 101 Old Plantersville Road, City Hall, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept item number 15 as presented, with the date of the public hearing being August 26th at 6:00 PM at City Hall. All right. Item 16. Consideration possible action on an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Montgomery, Texas, amending the rates to be charged for solid waste collection service inside the City of Montgomery, Texas, providing for a penalty for failure to pay accounts, providing conditions upon which service will be resumed, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing a savings clause, providing a Texas Open Meetings Act clause, providing an effective date. Ms. Carl.
Proposed ordinance is 2025-29. Good evening, Mayor and Council. You may recall last year, under the Waste Management Contract, we had done a five-year extension with an annual increase based on all types of different figures that are included in your packet this evening. So there's a CPI, there's a fuel cost, and all of these different variables that were brought into play. Based on that, the adjustment is an increase of 3.19%. And that is outlined in the attachments and also in your cover sheet, showing the old rate and the new rate. The rates that are in your packet are, they exclude the 5% administrative fee, et cetera. The rate will be slightly different. Can you get your bill? Because that 5% fee is on top of these, these front waste management. If you have any questions.
So it'll be an 8.19% increase?
Not really. The increase itself, the 5% has been there, so that's not 8%.
Okay.
The only thing that's increasing is waste management.
So 3.19?
Yeah. Snips will go into effect on August the 1st, so our bill...
Correct. So they will see it in their billing that we do on August 22nd. We did put a notification on the calendar, and that is going out with today, billing was done today, letting them know that there was going to be an increase in the waste management rates, and to see the website for that information. So we directed them, and tomorrow morning, we will post the result.
I make a motion we accept Agenda Item Number 16 as presented.
Motion, Mr. Zulwitz, that we accept item number 16 as presented.
I second.
Second, my Mr. Olson. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote, it's open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting item number 16 as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we'll accept item number 16 as presented. Item 17. Consideration possible action formally ending the warranty period and releasing the maintenance bond for List Station 10 Improvement Project.
Right. Good evening. As a reminder, this project was funded by Polting for Montgomery Development. So List Station Number 10 is on the south side of Town Creek, on Buffalo Springs. So first cross the bridge, kind of back into Montgomery, that List Station on to the side of the tree. So what this project concluded is Polting upsized the horse tank all the way from there to in front of the new, change names of the kind of site, like, like the Hill, Montgomery Hills Development, the Taylor Morrison Development.
Oh, yeah.
The, and so they upsized that line as part of the budget. Base two, which is currently bidding, is funded by Taylor Morrison, which will upsize the pumps and controls of the generator on that site. So it's kind of a two-piece effect. If you remember, the initial attempt was to do one project that they could cost split. Timing lets two developments were different, so we did the list thing, the horse van on one, and then the pump on the other to get to the same. So we walked this project back on June 24th. No deficiencies were found, and so we recommend finishing the warranty period on this portion of the project.
I make a motion we accept Agenda Item Number 17 as presented.
Motion, Mr. Donaldson, we accept item number 17 as presented.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Fox. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All those in favor of accepting item number 17 as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we'll accept item number 17 as presented. Item number 18 is not ready to be presented, so we will be moving on to item number 19. Consideration of possible action on a partnership agreement with Montgomery Neighbors Magazine to promote city initiatives promoting the city of Montgomery and calendar of events. Ms. Stephanie.
Good evening. I have Jan here with me, and she is with the Montgomery Neighbors Magazine, and she can help answer any questions that you may have. This is a publication for Montgomery. It serves 11 of the higher-end neighborhoods, and the goal is to update the community with the city initiatives, all the development that's going on. It'll also feature Mayor's letter in that and community events.
Great. It's another marketing avenue.
Yes. So what our plan is to do is to focus on the downtown area. What we're going to do, like you mentioned, is to, I'm offering a section in the magazine, we're going to call it something like City of Montgomery's Community Corner. We're going to have a monthly newsletter that is written by the mayor. And we're also going to be, possibilities are endless. What we want to do is to get more involvement in the city. We're going to be promoting different departments, like we can do the Parks and Recreation, the First Responders, you know, the councilman, and it goes on and on. Mayor is going to be featured on our front cover in September. Our goal is to promote small businesses, bring small businesses together with the community, and celebrate the heroes, celebrate just the people in our community. I think we need more of that in our community. What we would love to do is partner with the city in trying to bring that forward. Also, we want to be able to help bring these marketing avenues outside of our city limits as well. We have, you can do print, but we also do digital. Digital will be 77356 and 77316. So that total number, we reached nearly 3,000 homes with the print right now. But we are going to be bringing magazines into the downtown area. I don't have the exact number of businesses downtown, but we're going to be providing magazines to the downtown area. We're also going to be including the visitor center. And so we're going to be trying to help attract new businesses and all of our visitors and shoppers, trying to connect them with the happenings of Montgomery. And then one of the packages that we added on is to extend those two zip code areas. We have a package that we can add up to five more zip code areas, which extends your advertising at Montgomery outward, beyond your city limits. That's a great way to extend your marketing power. We also have, we've talked about other ways that we can boost your power here in the Montgomery area. So we're looking at originally just around 66,000 people monthly that we are, I'm sorry, I'm jumping around on you. I didn't realize we were up there. This is our team, Andrea Payton and Lily Louvier, our photographer. So on, so I'm sorry, I'm jumping all around on you, sorry. Our main goal is to support what the city does. We're growing so fast that I think the residents really would like to have a place to go to get updates. Monthly magazine, people would really read all of the new businesses that are coming into town, all of what you guys are saying tonight, we would like to have a recap. I do have my contact coordinator that would be gathering information from the city. We would be putting that information into the magazine. We have calendars, so we would be putting your calendar of events into the magazine. And I think that we could maybe get more attention and attendance. And so I'm so sorry, we're just waiting it right now, so it remains some people dizzy. But if you guys have any questions, we are looking at a half-page or a full page. Focus more on the full page. I personally am donating a half a page monthly for the mayor to write a newsletter every month. So she will be submitting a newsletter with what's happening in the city, welcoming, you know, whatever she wants to write. You know, we've talked about the items that she was very excited about talking about. We're also going to be talking about the new things that are happening, updates on the city. School events will have a calendar, obviously, on these big events. We're going to have pictures of these events. And, and is that any questions?
Well, tell me, oh, go ahead. Tell me how long you've been in business?
The magazine has been in print for over a year now. We've been in, Mike has been in print a year in July. I, the company, Best Version Media, is the third-largest media company in North America. So we have magazines in every single state, in every single province, in North America, in Canada. We have locally in the northern part of Houston. We have Montgomery, Magnolia, Woodlands, and Spring, Vernier, and Cypress, and Tomball, Conroe. But we'll probably have 215 in the next couple of years in North.
And where could I pick up one of these magazines at tomorrow?
I have a couple here. I have some in my car. The cool thing is we'll have extra copies in the visitor's center.
But they're not there now?
No.
I just got one.
The news party in yesterday.
Yeah, I got one in the mail yesterday.
Yeah, they just, I just got mine in the mail yesterday.
I've never gotten one. So...
Right now, they go to select neighborhood.
Select neighborhoods. Oh, how nice.
Okay. So the way we're trying to get them to more people is to bring them into the city and then into the visitor's center. Once we grow a little bit more, we're trying to expand. But as being a small business owner, I have to take, this comes out of my pocket, so I have to earn money to grow.
So, go ahead, Mr. Trump.
So, so you select neighborhoods versus zip codes?
They are in two different zip codes. So the neighborhoods, sorry, the neighborhoods are on Buffalo Springs, and then down 2854.
Okay, so it's not necessarily by zip code, it's by neighborhood?
Yes.
Because...
The neighborhood's inside these two zip codes. There's 11 neighborhoods that they are focusing on inside these two zip codes. Some are in the city limits, majority are out of the city limits, and it's to bring those within Montgomery.
What I was wondering about was in my zip code, because I'm on the, I'm on the south side of 101, it's 77316, but I've never seen the magazine, so...
Right. The print magazine, right now, goes to those 11 neighborhoods. We are trying to expand and grow into the city.
Just the beginning, yeah.
I have to take baby steps because this is coming out of my pockets. I'm trying to grow, and to grow, this is how I'm trying to do it. I'm trying to expand by donating the magazines into the businesses, and then donating magazines into the visitor's center. And then from that, we hope to grow and expand from that, but these are, these are the initial steps.
You said your distribution is currently 3,000 magazines. What percentage of those are going to residences via mail?
All 3,000.
All 3,000?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That number will increase as the, those homes on Buffalo Springs, those, you know, some of those are new neighborhoods. We expect the total number to be around 31, 315, somewhere in there.
So this is another initiative for marketing for the city since we don't, we don't have a magazine that highlights us, and I thought it was interesting as well because, well, our chamber doesn't have our name in it also, and this actually is about Montgomery. You all pick people that live in the city of Montgomery. You're really highlighting the businesses in downtown Montgomery. Like, everybody out east has all their national brands and national marketing, and it's those little guys that are in town that really could use the boost in marketing and, and then letting people know where events are too. I mean, I think you said we have over 200 events in the city between different variations of things.
Basically, that's reservations.
Reservations, yeah. So, but letting people know when we have stuff going on, yeah.
So I contacted other publishers, not only in Houston, but Austin, Dallas, and then Uti. There's a reason for that, if that's where my district manager is. But in Dallas, there are publishers who have cities in their magazines. Austin, there are as well. And here in Houston, KIMA is an interesting place. He's not quite up and running yet, but not only is he putting their city in the magazine, but he is also running their events and their, I'm just going to leave it at events. He's doing something else. But he is, they're really getting involved. And so Tony is the publisher, and he is working about 30 to 50 miles outside of the KIMA area, and then using those publishers in the other areas. We have about 25 magazines in the Houston area, so he is using those magazines to advertise KIMA. So there's a great web that we're starting to see in the publishers world. So it's really exciting to be on the, you know, the ground floor with all of this. Yes, sir.
Two questions. One, you say you currently have a digital, do your, does your digital presentation currently have a link to our city webpage?
No, but I can, I can get you some digital information. I do have that.
We're not a customer.
Do you have, well, the other thing is, I lost my track. Oh, what's the, what's the cost of the city to use your service?
It's in here.
There's a pricing, pricing in there.
So...
On page 118, or 118.
Yeah. So the tier one, effectively, on, let's see.
484.
So the tier one, the amount is anywhere from 1,600 or 1,660 to 2835. That depends on if you just go a month. So that depends on if you just go print. Obviously, the print only is the 1,600. The print plus digital, which is a broader reach, is the 2835.
Repeat those figures again. Repeat those figures again.
What? I don't remember the amount.
I have no idea.
So the full page is sixteen sixty for the print only?
We don't need it.
The digital's not twenty-eight. I believe it's thirty-eight thirty-five, because that's what her presentation says.
Thirty-eight.
Yeah.
Thirty-five, it looks like. On page one nineteen.
I'll let you explain it to me later. Are you on?
The pricing page.
What's included page?
Yeah.
So the price that's listed in our agenda does not appear to line up to what you put in your presentation.
Right, the whole, this is the monthly rate, this is not. This is...
Sorry, we looked through several different plans, and it may not have gone through.
But you have a pricing slide? It's on page one nineteen.
So that page shows you the pricing sheet that she has?
Could we, could we all get a copy of the magazine?
I can, yeah, I can get you.
See, we have this page right here in our...
City.
Yeah, this is it.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
Stephanie, is this coming out of M E D C money or general fund?
So this is just...
So it's city, sorry, it's city.
So it says digital right there.
Yeah, I apologize for that, it was a flatter, changes to the slide. And I believe that I had already prepared the agenda, so I apologize for that.
This is for the monthly and this is for annually for the full page.
Is it the twenty-eight thirty-five or thirty-eight thirty-five?
This is for the full page for both.
What she has on that sheet.
Right, but what is this, thirty-eight thirty-five?
To my understanding, the print only was sixteen sixty. That could have been for a half page, but then up to twenty-eight thirty-five. So the confusion might be when half page and full page. That's why I asked you on today.
Well, that's the one you asked. So that's the accurate pricing page, and I'll just write it down. This is for both, and this is for half.
Okay, so this is full page, is twenty-eight thirty-five monthly, and a half page is twenty-one sixty-five monthly. And that's the, all of it includes everything, these include that list.
Twenty-eight thirty-five for digital and full page.
So can you give me a copy of the final version of this? Yes, I can do that. So do I, did I hear that correctly? So the half page is sixteen sixty?
That's what it says on there.
And then, so the twenty-eight thirty-five is for the half page digital?
No.
It was for the full page?
Full page.
Okay, there. So what I probably did was put down the minimum and then the maximum.
So the sixteen sixty is just a half page print, includes no digital. Then there's a twenty-one thirty-five, I think that includes a half page, print, and digital. And then I believe this thirty, this twenty-eight thirty-five is full page and digital.
I make a motion that we table this to the August twenty-sixth meeting, which will give us an opportunity to have a budget workshop between now and then.
Yeah, and at that time, can we have this, the pricing sheet, make sure it's correct?
A motion by Mr. Zilovich that we table this until the August twenty-sixth budget meeting?
No.
May I, may I, I remember saying it's finalized that we actually have a scheduled budget workshop for August eleventh.
Yeah, well, this is for the August twenty-sixth meeting.
Yeah, okay.
But we want to, we will take action on it in the meeting, so that would be a table to the meeting.
Right.
We can bring it up as an agenda item within the budget meeting, but we can't take action in the budget meeting. So we want to table it until the twenty-sixth.
Till the twenty-sixth. All right, a motion by Mr. Zilovich to table this to August twenty-sixth.
Second.
Mr. Donaldson seconded. This motion is debatable or amendable, requires majority vote, it's open for discussion. All those in favor of tabling item as presented until August twenty-sixth meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will table item number nineteen as presented till August twenty-sixth. Item number twenty, consideration of possible action on acceptance of the old Plannersville forced main extension project and authorize the city administrator to sign the certificate of acceptance.
Counselor, please. Sorry, I made one thing one of your practice. We'll see a cover letter, followed by documents, and exhibit showing where the project is. So as a reminder, this is part of the ride of development. They like to do water sewer extensions to serve the development. So this is the forced main piece of that. This project was, if you look at the dates on here, it was completed a while ago. So we were talking last September, we did the final inspection. The, it was substantially complete last October by, so we say substantially complete. It was ready to be operational, so they had asked for testing. The functional items of the project were complete. The thing that we have been waiting on since last October till now is grass. And so establish a turf along the project route, so they had to go back to Grease Creek multiple times. That was in their contract to do so. They now have turf established along the route of the project. And so we'll bring this to you. So the dates on here seem a little off, so they were accepting as of October the twenty-fifth, twenty-four, because that is when the project was substantially complete and operational. So that's what the warranty in on October the twenty-fifth of this year. We'll do a final inspection at that time, re-pressurize and test it. The lift station should be operational by that point as well, to be able to test it through the lift station. Other than that, I would like to answer any questions.
I have one question, but it has nothing to do with this. It goes back to, and I forgot to ask you when we were on this, Houston Street water line replacement. Has it already been done?
It's not.
Is it scheduled to be done? I mean, when's it scheduled to start?
It is not currently. It's on the capital plan, but it's not in a, in the next four months.
Thank you.
Make a motion, we accept item number, agenda item number twenty as presented.
Motion by Mr. Zilovich that we accept item number twenty as presented.
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Olson. This motion is debatable or amendable, requires majority vote, it's open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting item number twenty as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, we'll accept item number twenty as presented. Executive session number twenty-one, closed session. City Council will meet in closed session pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in it. Section 551 dot oh seven two, deliberations about real property regarding 213 Prairie Street and a potential lease agreement. It is six fifty-nine, and we will head into executive session.
Yeah.
Turning in to Houston, costing $40 a park down there.
I know.
Hey, Mary Ann, you still here?
Dude, even the woodlands now is charging me by the freaking 15 minutes.
My God, it's freezing in here.
It's nice.
I know why your hands are cold.
Oh, it's wonderful here.
Good God, a mighty Friday. It's like an egg glue. Okay.
I'm not sweating.
Welcome back. It's 7:38. We are back in open session. Number 22 on your agenda, City Council will reconvene in open session at which time on the matters discussed in closed session may be considered. A, Section 551.072, deliberations about real property regarding 213 Prairie and a potential lease agreement.
Uh, make a motion to authorize the city administrator to discuss the 213 property with the MEDC.
I'll second. Motion by Mr. Olson, second by Ms. Langley that we authorize the city administrator to
Discuss.
Discuss 213 Prairie with MEDC. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires mandatory vote. All those in favor of authorizing the city administrator to discuss 213 Prairie, with MEDC, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have what the motion carries. All right, council inquiry. I've been good here. I had something.
My, my inquiry has to do with the MEDC meeting. I can't remember the date of it, but we need to add this to the agenda item, to the agenda.
To the last one.
Something I totally forgot of. All right.
We have time to do that.
Yeah, it's not until August, sometime in August.
Second Tuesday.
Unless MEDC.
Yeah, we just had the last one last week.
All right, next item is closing agenda, item 23, items to consider for placement on future agendas. Number 24, all entertaining motion to adjourn. I'll make motion to adjourn.
I second.
Ms. Langley, Mr. Olson, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have what the motion carries. 7:39, we out. We don't.